... stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Alt?
Here.
Mr. Beistock?
Here.
Dr. Pike?
Here.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Here.
Mrs. Love?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Polakowski?
Here.
Mrs. Rowe?
Here.
Mr. Mounds?
Here. Nine present. Citizens comments?
We have no cards this evening.
Thank you. Minutes?
At the August thirteenth, or at the September thirteenth board meeting, you will be asked to approve the August ninth and August sixteenth minutes.
Finance?
Question on the minutes, Mike. On the August ninth minutes, on the second page, the top of the page, I might be wrong, but it says that Mrs. Huggins told Mr. Vanasik that the district losing money at the site that Eversen agreed paper, half the cost of the site, I thought it was half the cost of the loss.
Yes.
Well, it says here-
Half the cost of the loss?
Half the loss, not the cost. It says cost in the minutes, and I think it's loss, right? I think we need to clear that up. Thank you.
That is correct. Thank you.
That's on page three. August ninth.
Of the August ninth minutes.
Thank you. Finance?
You'll be asked to approve the treasures report and the accounts payable. Those will be available for you in your next board packet. We did not receive a bank statement yet because of the holiday in the earliest of the month, so those will be available to you in your packet. You'll be asked to vote on those.
All business, Mr. William Porter?
Mr. Porter has declined to speak to the board this evening. He did however, provide me with information that he wanted you to have, along with a letter to me. It says, "After consulting with several close friends that I consider excellent speakers, it was unanimous that I present my rebuttal to Mr. Alt's failure to plan study in terms of facilities, finances, and future in writing, rather than trying to convey my facts within a restricted thirty minute timeline. Because of the amount of detailed information, standing in front of the school board on a camera reading my response would not be beneficial to anyone, so I am submitting my rebuttal in writing so board members, administration, press, or anyone else can read and comprehend on their own timeline. If anyone needs further clarification or explanation, please feel free to contact me or have me in to respond. I want to thank the board for giving me the extra time to meet with them. I can only hope the members who take the time to read my response will find it helpful in helping them to make future decisions when it comes to operating the district's educational facilities." And it's signed by Bill Porter. So you may peruse that at your-
I have a question, Jack.
Yes.
This is ten pages long. Who made these copies?
Just as I would make copies of anything else that comes in, I made them. Mr. Porter asked us to bill him for those copies and we took to do it.
That I would agree to. Jack, I provide a lot of copies of a lot of things, all at my own expense.
Understood.
I do that all the time.
And again, Mr. Porter did ask us to bill him for copies that we made.
World War II memorial?
The World War II memorial, the dedication is scheduled for October 3rd, 2012, at eleven o'clock. It is partially constructed, so if you're driving past the football stadium, you can certainly take a look there.
New business, advertising on athletic venues?
Yeah, I've been approached on several occasions about the possibility of placing advertising on athletic venues, football fields, softball fields, so on and so forth. We discussed it a little bit administratively the other day. It certainly poses some opportunities for us in terms of funding teams. Some boosters may be interested in doing it as well. However, if we are interested in doing such a thing, we certainly need to have a watertight policy in place that describes what kind of advertising is permissible and what kind of advertising is not permissible. I did find some copies of policies that other districts have, and I just put a sample together, and I use the word sample and not draft, for you to take a look at. Mr. Potonic certainly has not reviewed this by any stretch of the imagination, but before we moved any further on even looking at whether we needed a policy, I wanted to find out whether or not the board has interest in pursuing commercial advertising on our athletic venues, so we would open that up for discussion.
I have a question. It says, "A decision will need to be made about whether the advertising should benefit the district, a specific athletic program, or a booster organization. Explain to me how anything other than benefiting the district should be a consideration."
Again, that's a topic for discussion. Some districts do it in all three ways. I don't have a feeling on how it should be done, but I put that there for discussion. So I thank you for bringing that up and opening that discussion.
If you pick one athletic program, what are you saying to the rest? You pick one booster organization, what are you saying to the rest? That is not an appropriate way to handle this at all. It's very discriminatory.
I think this could be worked out with time, and sit down and try to work it out. You're not eliminating nobody, and booster organizations, athletic events, everything. I think it could be worked out with everybody, with no, what do you want to call it? Somebody getting all the money. I think we could work it out between the athletic committee and Charlie, and sit down and come up with something.
And again, before we get into the minutiae of it, is that a direction you want to go? That's the first thing we need to decide.
I mean, that's my-
Yeah. This is a question to you and to Mr. Swink. What, just to get a feeling, or you visit other stadiums quite a bit in places. What is practice here in western Pennsylvania? Is there quite a bit of advertising? Is there very little, or what are you finding?
There's certain, every district's, certain districts do one of others. I haven't really looked at it as far as thinking what everybody does, but I do know that some of them play those signs, maybe so much for signing, or like advertisements where the speaker or the aide can say, you know, whatever they be, just for so much money or donation. A lot of places now that are going with those boards that they have, or any outside door to be, and you can run it. What's nice about those is obviously they don't take up the budget for some of the places. That's why I'm recording these. There are some places that I've talked to, they do make way to their money towards, whether it's a district or a booster or whatever it may be, they can generate revenue from, you know, whatever they need to do. If you want to upgrade facilities, that's one way to do it.
I've been to a lot of fields and different places around which they do utilize this as a fundraiser or whatever. And I think it's a good idea because you're getting your businesses involved, which is in the community or whatever. And a lot of facilities do use this advertising, whether it's on the board like Charlie's talking, or they have signs made up and they hang. And I think it's a good idea.
I agree. I wouldn't want to close the door until we took a look at it, because there can be money generated. I know that they pay up to five thousand dollars to hang a sign underneath the scoreboard to say, "This is sponsored by so-and-so." I mean, there's money out there to be made.
Just a feeling, is it like an electronic sign? That you're changing, like you'd have at a professional game, or is it that what you're referring to, at this changing sign?
Put it this way, I'd love to say electronic sign. But at this point in game, I don't think we can afford electronic sign. Maybe we can generate enough money later on down the line to have an electronic sign with businesses, just hanging signs up on the fences, the gate. I can remember back a few, I don't know how many years ago, but we used to have signs right behind the bleachers in the stadium. Espies had one there, and there was different ones that had signs there. I don't know whether they paid for it, but maybe that was a music program. They could have done that and took them down after their game was over. But I really think-
Yeah, Levi, our slope inch has, we just want a new scoreboard, and underneath it we installed about the same length as the scoreboard, a digital sign, and you can put in there, "Alt's Tax Service sponsored this." That was a plug for my business.
Scott, do you have, now, a question. Do you have to pay for that?
What, the electronic part?
For your electronic, I mean for your advertising.
Yeah, whoever advertises, yeah, has to pay.
And it generates money, right?
Thousands of dollars, yeah.
I don't have any problem with the Alt Tax Service thing. Do we sell Coke and Pepsi in our schools?
In our schools?
Yeah.
No.
We're going to put a Coke and Pepsi sign up there. This is my concern. And you start looking at who's got the money, who backs it. If we're not selling Coke and Pepsi, and Lynn, you don't push Coke and Pepsi, I don't think, do you? Right. And I think we need to be very careful, that if we're not doing it in our schools, we shouldn't be able to do it on a scoreboard just because they've got the money, and they've got the money. They will come to you.
Am I right or wrong? Doesn't Pepsi have a scoreboard over at the girls' softball?
They do. And in order to get that, that was purchased back in the day when there were pop machines in the buildings.
The buildings, yeah.
And we had to enter into a contract that they would be the exclusive supplier for a certain number of years, in order for them to sponsor that sign.
Yeah, I don't know if it was, I remember in the mid nineties, we had quite a discussion, I may have my year wrong, but on, there was a Pepsi scoreboard, as I recall, out at the stadium. And that we, kind of looking at as I'm talking here-
There was one on the top of the side.
Does anybody recall that?
Yes, yes.
And I remember we debated it intensely, and there was, the catch was, we had to sell Pepsi products in the refreshments and in some, but we went back and forth on it, and they, the final analysis, we decided, they provided the scoreboard, as I recall, I may have, as in rounds, they basically provided it, and then they, you know, you had the logo on it, yeah.
But I think that was replaced with Russ Grimm's name-
Okay.
-on that scoreboard.
Okay.
Yeah, I think there's still, there's still one sponsor-
Green Acres is on there, and there's another, but one of them, National City Bank was on the far side, and they, when they went out of business or sold, they took that off.
Right.
And nobody's replaced yet or went out to get advertisement put on.
Also to address what you said, Levi, being at the Janet football game last week, like Charlie was saying, they also did announcements over the speaker, like, "We'd like to thank tonight such and such sponsors for donating this," or "Such and such sponsor for that." And they like donated money and got recognition over the loudspeaker also, so that's another way of doing it without cluttering with signs, if we looked into that way also. Or they had the digital sign there at Janet.
A lot of places have digital signs, and they've really got big.
Do we have any kind of ballpark figure as to how much it might generate, or how it obviously would be, depending on how many signs we would allow, and what have the length of it?
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't go to that length, because again, we didn't know if there was interest in it.
Right, right, okay.
So if there's interest in it, we'll ask the board to direct us to explore it further, and then we can certainly get back with all kinds of details and proposed policies.
Decide whether we want to or not.
Right.
I mean, I don't know how the mechanic or the financial part works, but I mean, if we do, say, take in eight or ten thousand dollars a year, you know, maybe we could use the first year to pay for band uniforms, the next year to pay for football uniforms, whatever. I mean, each year goes for a major purchase.
Sure.
I don't know. There's a lot of ways we could do it.
I went to a workshop at the PSBA conference last year, navigating the new fiscal reality, and this was one of the things that they really talked about in terms of, you know, how to be able to fund some of the non-academic programs.
I mean, a lot of booster leagues does this at the school too. I mean, it's just, every, when you're going to, if you go and ask about it, you're going to find out, some of the stuff, they divide between the boosters, they go to the athletic committee, or it goes to the athletic, take care of the fields. Different places does it different. I mean, it's just on how Southmore wants to do it, if they-
Right.
Could I ask about the activity fund at the high school? That, that's for all high school students. Would that be something that, and that gives us first, if the funds that go into that activity fund, then it gets dispersed for, I don't know, to go on field trips, or tell me what, that's all the activity fund's used for? I forget right now, but-
Various activities, student council-related activities.
But each, most kids could, would benefit from that if it went into the activity fund?
But only half the school, Jesse. Only half the school district gets it. What do the elementary kids get?
Well, but don't, most of the people that use that field are high school students. I mean, the midgets use it, but they pay to use it. It's at the high school, quote, stadium.
I was up here today, they were kicking soccer balls around up here at the middle school when I was there.
Yeah, I think we played Mount Pleasant today, our middle school kids.
There's a soccer field here, I think. I just think, I'm big on fair, Jesse. I'm real big on fair. What one gets, we all get. And just to give it to half the school, or one organization, or one sport, is not fair.
Interestingly, our principals and Mr. Salem are scheduled to be at a webinar on activity funds, how they can be funded, what they can be spent on, so that we're sure we're in compliance with that, but that's what, next week I believe.
On Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. All right, so would you like that?
Can I, you know, I've kind of changed, but I remember, I kind of opposed it back in the nineties, and I just sort of heard a discussion. The reason was, I thought it kind of lets the foot in the door of kind of the commercialization of public education. And just as an example, big company here, Waste Management, I'm not sure that I'd want them providing the science texts necessarily. Maybe not, but you know what I mean? But I'm just, and that's, I'm not trying to take a swipe at Waste Man, but you could name any, or Pepsi, Pepsi was the most obvious one. Is that, is, but you have to weigh that over against, I don't know, I'm, over against, and I would even say this, of how open we are to it, a kind of a, respecting a certain openness to products that I don't agree with, or that probably, none of us agree on every product that would be up there for various, for various reasons, so I don't know. But that, at least at the time, I'm just putting that as a kind of a negative.
I think you're selling your identity data.
Is there any legal issues to this?
Oh, yes.
Oh, plenty.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. We had many discussions back in the nineties. And one issue is, when you open the door, you pretty much let everyone in. And you may find advertisements going up for things or organizations that may be unpopular or not exactly what you had in mind. And that's very difficult to eliminate once you open the door. If you do something exceedingly basic, like, well, all you get is your name of your company or organization, I guess that has some advertising promotional value, but I don't know if, you know, the business entities would be interested in just having their name up and not something about what products they sell or whatever. You know, if all they get is their name and a phone number, or a name and an address, I guess that would be one way to do it. But even then, you might find yourself having organizations advertise that might not be viewed with popularity in the district. And this frequently comes up in litigation with places like subways and public transit systems. And they have those little signs up, you know, while you're standing there, holding on for dear life, trying to get home. And there's been litigation whenever an organization that might be not locally liked by the local governing authority wants to advertise and wants to put up a sign that is going to be viewed as disturbing, or unpopular, or whatever. And so those are some of the legal considerations on that.
Yeah, but my husband and I have picked up the trash at Madison for about fifteen years, and they put up signs saying who you are. So I am aware of the fact that recently the Ku Klux Klan wanted to pick up trash, or the white supremacists, or something like that. They went to court over this, because whose sign do you put up?
There's litigation now, and I believe it's the state of Georgia, over one of these highways where you get to, you know, donate something, and you get your sign that you're helping cleaning up the highway in that area.
Yeah, that's what we do, yeah.
And I think there's litigation over that now, because they want to do it.
It is, it is. It's been, so I think we need to be very careful, so.
As a solicitor, what do you recommend?
That you proceed exceedingly cautiously, because I, you know, once you open the door, it's hard to pull everything back. And I think you need to come to some understanding, like, well, what is it you're trying to achieve? Are you trying to raise money? How much money do you think you're trying to raise? And, or is it not really a money-making thing? Is it just a kind of an opportunity that, you know, you think maybe only local business entities would advertise, and you're just sort of giving them an opportunity to advertise if they want to? But you can't limit it to them. It would be available probably for any entity that's willing to pay the freight. And that's what I'm worried about, because it's a little different than a classroom. I had greater concerns about the classroom and about closed-in areas where students go to either study or to perform their own gym classes. Here, it's a little bit different because you're outside, it's a volunteer activity, so it's not exactly the quote captive audience kind of thing that you would have in a classroom. Those are some of the things that you could think, and decide whether or not you think you want to go that route.
About I put up a board, Catherine, fight for school board. You'd tear it down. See, you gotta let, you let somebody in, you gotta let me in. You're not going to do that.
That probably would be mild, considering some of the things I've got in the back of my mind, I'm worried about.
Is that something you want on the agenda to direct us to pursue?
I don't.
Or do you want to let it go for now?
I think you guys should pursue it.
You do?
I do.
I don't.
Why don't you vote on it next week?
Yeah, so we'll put it on the agenda, and we'll see how the vote goes.
Transportation contract?
Yeah, we talked a little bit last month, we do need to get a transportation contract underway. I had put a draft contract in front of you. Mr. Potonic and I had some very brief discussion about that. He has a few revisions that he would like to make in terms of timeline and so on. Once we get all of David's corrections and suggestions in, I'd like to have a meeting of the transportation committee of the whole, to take a look at the request for proposal and decide on a timeline for getting these out.
Jack, I went through it page by page, and I have a number of questions. Can I bring some of them up now?
Sure.
The pages are not numbered, but if you go back, if you go to page five, do we usually do five years? Five years, something?
That's what we have done in the past. David questioned that as well.
Okay, that was a big question.
We have done five years, yes.
I had, then on seven, it talk about, I was wondering, is that your name tag?
That's right. I really wasn't throwing it at you, no matter what you-
Thank you, Jack. I was just wondering if, on page seven, I thought, should we not include language? Aren't there laws that say, if you run transportation, first of all, you don't have to provide transportation, but if you do, aren't there laws about the one-mile thing and stuff like that? And shouldn't that be included, that specifically those are the, are there laws there, are there rules or laws, or am I crazy?
Well, you can, the student can walk up to a mile to a bus stop-
Right.
But it specifically says in here somewhere that the district decides on the bus stops. So in other words-
Okay, I just wondered if the law should be in there? That was my question, whether we should cite the law as part of this, these specifications.
Yeah, we probably could. David, I'll turn that one over to you.
Then on page ten-
Tell me what the heading is on page ten.
Okay, there is no heading, but it'll say, "Safety precautions," halfway down. And I was shocked when I read this. "The successful contractor will be required to provide buses and drivers to any or all municipalities of the district in the event of a community evacuation." A community evacuation. We would pay for that? That struck me as an unusual item.
I'm not seeing where you are.
You have to count ten pages.
Yeah, "precautions" and then-
It's above safety precautions.
Yeah, that was something that was in the boilerplate that the PSBA had. We can certainly take that out.
No, no, no. Wouldn't we, good night, if there'd be a tragedy and some kind of, wouldn't we want to make the school buses available?
Make them available, Levi, but we shouldn't have to pay for it.
Well, come on. Who's going to argue about several thousand dollars when you have lives at stake? We even argued about that one, but make them available.
I think that's wrong. On next page eleven, I was wondering, does it not say in there, I couldn't find the words that say, "The use of fuel should be limited only to district vehicles." District vehicles, not personal vehicles, but district vehicles. It says not for any other purpose, but it seems to me that no bus driver should be able to fill up his cars. I don't know. I just thought that it should include in there, district vehicles.
It says, "Fuels furnished by the district shall be used exclusively for the transportation of the district's pupils pursuant to the terms and conditions of the agreement." I think that's what it says.
Okay, but when we buy fuel, how do we fuel our vans and our trucks and stuff?
Lee?
Is that different?
Yeah, we have, we have an account with an outside vendor. It has nothing to do with this.
Oh, it's not part of the fuel that we bid on?
No.
Okay, see, I couldn't figure that out. Then the next one you have down, you crossed out, it says, "Bus routes and bus stops shall be prepared by the," and you crossed out, "contractor and approved by the school district." But wouldn't both of them, the contractor and our transportation director, work together to establish bus routes and bus stops?
No, traditionally, the school district has established bus routes and bus stops. The contractor, and believe me, this is not in the front door, current contractor, but it's in the best interest of the contractor to have more buses on the road traveling fewer miles. It's in our best interest to have fewer buses traveling more miles. And we are quite content to look out after our own interests and our people decide on the routes.
That would be a shame if that existed, Jack. That would be a shame.
It doesn't exist now, but let's be realistic, there are unscrupulous people out there who may be bidding on this.
Okay, the other, the other thing that surprised me, it said that "The student, the student rosters will be provided by the contractor." "Finalized student rosters will be provided by the contractor to the district's transportation office two weeks prior to the first day of the school year." Where did those come from in the first place? I mean, how would they know? How's the contractor know?
Where are you reading?
The C, the bottom of C, the bottom of C, on page eleven. It just says, "Finalized student rosters will be provided by the contractor to us."
That's crossed out.
Crossed out.
Is that the way it used to be?
Again, this was a boilerplate from PSBA, or PASBO, so in this case, that didn't apply to us, so I crossed it out.
Okay, and then you also crossed out that, "They'll be responsible to provide annual communication of bus routes to the district schools and all students and families." Is that not good?
That's because, yeah, because if we plan the routes, then we communicate the routes.
On that next page, under pupil supervision, does, and loco parentis apply here, because the student is on a bus that is part of our school day?
That, I have taken, I have taken the position that doorstep, as Dr. Warner just stated, doorstep to doorstep is our control.
Right.
There is some room for argument on one aspect of that, but I have previously given the opinion, absent a court case or other statutory law, that getting on our bus means that we are now in charge, because we are providing the bus.
You're in charge. See, that's what I was seeing, that the driver doesn't have very much authority, according to this. They can write up a report, but that's it. Okay.
That is correct.
But the next one, do you keep these tapes? Are these tapes kept under B? Is it something you keep?
No. When, they're kept for a period of time, a week, week and a half, and if there are no issues on that particular run, they're reused.
Reused, okay. And that last one, "No person other than a school pupil shall be transported except in an emergency, or when designated by the superintendent or is designated." We have all kinds of people going on buses with kids, even if- We have all kinds of people going on buses with kids, even to field trips and...
And those are chaperones who are designated by myself or my designate.
And that's how you can, that's how you cover that, okay. I just wondered.
I don't know if you've heard that commercial, it's a GEICO commercial where the lady rides to work on her kid's school bus to save money.
No.
We're not having that here.
And then in the next one, under 15, the school district reserves the right to contract with parents, guardians and others for transportation of pupils. That, would that be your special education situations?
Sometimes.
Or for money, do we pay these people?
Sometimes. Sometimes it's more economical.
I understand.
For example, when we have a student who may attend a non-public school.
I understand.
On the opposite end of the district from anywhere we have a bus going, it's cheaper to pay the parent.
Do we have like forms on that, Jack, or rates on that or something?
Yeah, don't ask me what they are.
That's all right, that's all right.
And also, we can also contract, for example, with a smaller contractor for special needs transportation.
Yeah, I know that. I just, I just didn't know that I had ever seen any contracts, rates or anything like that, but that's okay. On the next page, under B, it says that the board should run for a period of 180 school days a year. Our kids, do our kids go 180 days? What about in-service days and things like that? How does that come out? Are we, are we, are we tight? Should they just say student days or something?
Well, we usually leave it at 180 there because in some cases, when we don't have school, we're still sending kids to a parochial or a nonpub or a special needs school or whatever the case may be.
Okay, I was wondering.
So those buses need to be available on those days.
I just didn't know where that number came from, if the kids didn't always come. But you still have boat tech and stuff. And I think I had one more question. It's page 20, under activity buses. Do we still run activity buses?
Yes, we do.
I thought we stopped them.
It's at the high school, I think.
Yeah, we, we run.
We stopped something, didn't we? No?
Charlie, we talked about stopping activity buses, but we never stopped them, right?
Wasn't the concern, wasn't the concern that they were empty, Charlie? These buses were running with a couple of kids on them. Some days there's a lot?
Yeah.
Then the other thing that was taken out on page 20, it says building principals must submit a request form to the contractor for field trips. That was taken out. You don't do that?
No, they don't. They submit a request to central office. And central office deals with the contractor.
Well, shouldn't that be in here then?
Tell me, tell me the heading on 20.
It's scheduled double A and it's almost the last, it's the last four pages from the end. Yeah, I think you're coming close, Jim. Down to bottom there, Jack, because it would seem to me that we should put in this contract somewhere that we will notify these people when we need field trips. And that they must respond to the request in ample time to allow the school to make adequate arrangements.
Right.
And you took that out?
Yeah, we took that out because of the building principal piece, but I think you're right.
Central office, I would put that back in and add central office. And I'm done. I'm sure you're glad I'm done.
Just a curiosity question. Charlie sets the stops. Who sets the times for the stops? Is that Charlie or is that the contractor?
You pretty much set up the times as well then, Charlie. The times for, on the bus stops, when the buses will be at certain stops, you do that as well, right? So we'll work on that and again, we'll have a Transportation Committee meeting to discuss that.
WIU authorization?
Yeah, it's necessary to appoint an authorized representative and an alternate to the joint purchasing consortium for supplies and fuel. In the past, I believe the business manager has been the representative and superintendent has been the alternate. We're certainly willing to do that again. And then the next thing is we will ask you for permission to advertise. Each local board has to grant permission for the joint purchasing consortium to advertise for the 1314 paper and fuel products. So we'll be asking your approval of...
See, Jack, this is where I was coming from, fuel.
Right.
So I thought our fuel was our fuel, but you're saying there's still another one.
Yes, we also use outside vendors.
Don't we get it cheaper here?
This is diesel fuel in our, our trucks and little vans with gasoline.
All of our school buses are diesel, 100%.
I believe so, yeah.
Yes.
Somewhere off 10 or whatever that, when we did our last, yeah, natural gas. When we did our last contract, he wanted to help implement that.
So they don't bid for anything but diesel?
Well, they make bid for gas.
We get a little bit of unleaded gasoline too.
But this is for, this is for student transportation.
I understand that, Jack.
And it goes into the tanks over at rooms or wherever.
Yeah, I understand that.
Our guys, our trucks, our maintenance vehicles don't go to rooms.
I guess my question is why?
Yeah, we used to have, well, because it's clear over on the other side of the district for starters. And we used to have, at one point in time, we had a tank that was actually on-site, I believe, up here at SES. And there was an EPA issue with it and we had to remove it for a whole lot of money. And for whatever reason, we couldn't do it.
Jack, I know for a fact that there were administrators who had free guests forever to go home at night. And I know that, not, not now, not now. So, you know, my concern was...
Tell me where to get it.
My concern was that it's not all in one place. So when we have an account with somebody, we don't get a break on anything. We're just paying what I'm paying at the pump, right?
Correct. We do, we don't pay tax. We don't pay taxes on the fuel.
Yeah, that helps. Thank you.
Yeah, we did at one time have a tank here for our maintenance vehicles and so on and so forth. And I don't remember completely what the, what the whole story was, but I know we had to dig it out.
Oh, they're tough, aren't they?
Yeah.
Preston Ridge agreement?
Yeah, we have a student, a special needs student who needs to attend Preston Ridge Day School. So we'll ask you to approve that agreement as well.
Citizens comments?
I have a couple other things to bring. In front of you, there was a table with some different years on it. It came from the state tax equalization board. And it basically talks about the market values of the properties here in the district for the last several years, 2008. It shows what it was and the changes there. And then it goes on up through 2012. And as you can see, our market value in the district, or 2011, excuse me, the market value in the district has increased significantly. So that's just an informational item for you there. The other thing that I have for you this evening was, I think Levi had asked about a comparison between our districts and Fayette County in terms of millage. So we also handed that to you. And the last thing, which I don't have on your agenda for this evening, but we will be asking you to vote to permit us to submit Plan Con K to the state. And Plan Con K is the final step in the refinancing of the bond. You may remember that by refinancing, we were able to net about $445,000. And there's a significant amount of paperwork that goes along with that. And that will need to be submitted to the state, so we will ask for permission to submit that as well. And that is all I have for you for this evening for public consumption.
I will have something in executive session for you about the litigation with Diane Gordon Tax.
Oh, I do have one more thing. I'm sorry. I'm glad you waved, you reminded me of something. You had asked us to look into whether or not there was a lease or an agreement on file for the athletic fields at Ruffsdale after carrying the filing cabinet apart. Peg was not able to find that. There was discussion at the last meeting about whether or not we should deed that property to the rec league or whatever. I certainly don't get a vote as a board member, but it is my obligation to advise you. And I'm going to advise you that in my opinion and mine only, we should probably enter into some kind of an agreement with directly that protects their interest in the investment they have made in the field while at the same time protecting our interest as stewards of the district and owners of the property. So that if in the future, we would have legitimate use for that property, we would certainly be able to retain it for the use of educating students or, you know, for student school district use. So I would, my recommendation would be that we don't give anything away in terms of our assets, but I think it would be prudent for the district and for the rec league to sit down and enter into some kind of a formal agreement in terms of how, how long and so on and so forth.
That should be an agenda item, and I think Mr. Petonic should...
Yeah, and we'll put that on the agenda, absolutely.
Well, he should develop something.
Right.
Somebody should do something.
That's what I'm saying. We'll put that on the agenda for you to vote on.
Yeah, I really don't care. It's just that we have no guidelines. We don't really know.
Right, right.
Jack, I just got this when I got here. Now, you said that there's a...
We just got it today as well.
Yeah, a significant increase in our market value. I'm doing some quick math there. It's like $8,890 a year, that's all. It's run up by $32,000, like from 580 to 617. If my math is wrong, that's only $8,000 a year.
That's million, though.
I'm sorry, eight million a year. But, yeah, eight million a year, I'm sorry. Eight million a year, but it's not, it's 8 million, it's over 2 million. That's for the whole district.
Over four, five year period.
For the whole district.
Yeah.
Yeah, 97,953,000 over four years.
When you finish on that, I have another question. Where are we, you know, I, any other school that does not, I look at these, Fayette schools had a number which did not meet the annual learning goals or whatever it's called, the AYP. And as I understand, students in some neighboring districts could transfer in a general kind of way. Is there any movement that you can talk about?
Yeah, I can, I can talk a lot about that. Dr. Scott and I had a conversation about really trying to get in front of that because our district performs well. And we thought especially in, you know, in classes where a student teacher ratio would be appropriate, it would be nice to pull some of those students in where we could pull in some tuition dollars without expending additional salary dollars. We received a paper in the mail that said, you know, please sign here if you're interested in being a receiving school and return it next week, which was prior to a board meeting. So that kind of frightened me a little bit. But I did call Harrisburg and I talked to a gentleman there. And he said that he thought maybe two school districts in the state at that point in time, and it was like maybe a day before the deadline, had faxed their forms back. And I said, we're thinking about doing this. Can you tell me what the guidelines are as to how this might work? And he said, no. I said, can you tell me, do you have a sample policy that my board can adopt? He said, no. I said, what do you have? He said, well, we have the legislation that came from Capitol Hill that was handed to us. He said, I, I made up a list of FAQs, frequently asked questions, and tried to answer them. When it came back from legal, none of them were answered. He said, at this point in time, he said, I said, well, how does the tuition work? He said, well, you need a tuition agency. I said, what do you mean by that? He said, something like a community foundation, which is who administers our EITC grant that we receive through Scottsdale Bank. He said, you would need, there would need to be a tuition funding agency set up and the monies would go to that agency and then you would then bill them for however many students you have. And I said, well, is there a vehicle for doing that? He said, no. I said, so are you recommending that maybe we look at this for next year? He said, I really can't recommend that to you, sir. I said, thank you. So at this point in time, it's just, you know, the legislation is so new that, that nobody knows how to...
Who did you call?
Department of Ed. And he was very frustrated, by the way, because he said, you know, he said, we had this handed to us in terms of legislation. He said, we had a very short turnaround time to, to give you guys some guidance, he said, and we just don't have it yet, so...
Well, has anybody approached you? Any child come and said, I want to come here?
I think we've had a couple, yes.
You have had a couple.
And we have, we do have a policy on non-resident students if parents are paying the tuition. But this would, the way this works, it's, the subsidy is withheld. It's a whole different, different funding string. I hope I answered your question there, but the answer is, we don't know.
No, that's, sure, so we'll work with it.
So we're looking, you know, we're looking as the months go on here for some guidance. And if it's something that, you know, looks like it might be a good thing for our district and we can help some kids in the process, we would certainly entertain that notion.
I just, this is gonna, I remember my, one of the first meetings on the board here. And Dr. Scott went up and gave a presentation. We were talking about this very thing of meeting our, our annual goals. And he said, just tell us what the goals are. We'll meet them and we'll have people wanting to come here to study. And I totally love that kind of a can-do attitude that is a part of our administration and teachers here. And I think it's, it's a real, it's a real positive thing on it. And I'm not trying to take advantage of any struggling, I mean, that, everybody needs to work that out in any way, so, yeah, that's helpful.
On this Fayette millage rate comparison, we're what? We're four, four out of eight. We're right in the middle. What does that mean? Are, do we have the fourth amount of money? Are people fourth rich or fourth poor, or what does it mean?
That's the amount of millage that you're charging in terms of the tax burden.
But what does it mean, though, Jack? I mean...
It means that...
We're in the middle of something.
It means that for Upper Tyrone Township, Everson, and all of our Fayette residents are paying 12.7 mils of taxes on the value of their property. In Connelsville, they're paying 12.6, Valverne, 16.1. That they, it just is the rate at which they're being taxed.
Well, Mr. Petonic did that demographics for the negotiations. That was the poorest section, but there are four areas in our school district and that was at rock bottom. I mean, that's where the lowest per capita, the lowest everything was in.
Right.
That, well, not all of it, but Everson and some of those places, not, maybe not part of that one, Upper Tyrone, but they were not wealthy people. I just didn't know what this meant. I see that, I see the numbers and we're in the middle.
Well, it's, you know, when you set your millage rates, when we do the budget, right?
Yeah.
We set, we set, and because of the numbers the state tax equalization board gives us, it says, you know, X amount of mils in Westmoreland County is equal to X amount of back.
Right.
So are our taxes higher or lower than Albert Gallin, Fraser, Uniontown, Brownsville, Laurel Highlands, Connelsville, and Valverne?
So you just, you just did it for Upper Tyrone and Everson. You didn't do it for the rest of the school district, okay.
No, but, yeah, well, that's...
Yeah, that's a couple meetings ago, we gave it to Westmoreland.
But take a look at that, look at 2012. Where are we on 2012? I don't see, Connelsville is below us. I see about two. I don't mean to name out, but I see, I think two, look at 2012, I think we're about third to the bottom, aren't we?
Right, Albert Gallin is slightly lower than Connelsville.
Yeah, I thought we were in the middle. We're three out of eight then, okay, instead of four. Okay, yeah, I think, yeah.
Well, I, it is, you know, prolong a point here, but I, if you look at the Westmoreland, over half of them did what was needed to do in regards to having revenue. I think if we, I think we did as a Fayette school. I think a lot of schools are not doing what it needs to be done. And, yeah, they're, they're gonna be in for tough times. We all are in for tough times.
I was just gonna say, we're not, we're not...
We're gonna be...
There you go.
We're gonna, we're gonna get through it.
You have anything else?
I just want to talk about the SPC. Looks like it's done.
Oh, yeah, it's done. Kids seem to like, they, they put a chalked, they thank you school board. So I have to draw you a picture of that.
Is that out of, is this...
Yeah, this is what...
Citizens comments? Name and address and subject, please.
Jan Kieter, six twenty-eight Hopeshead Avenue, Scottsdale, East Huntington Township, and just have a couple responses. Just here tonight, in no particular order. On the transportation contract, I think if you listen to the news that we're looking at a real priming for a conflict with Iran, and in that case, fuel would be quite expensive. And I'd like to see us having that contract, the option of four days of a week where we hold the power in that scenario. It's not expensive to hold that position, and if they think it's bizarre, so what? We have the people coming to here telling us there will be no electrical supply for us and make proposals, and that's equally, I would consider much less bizarre. On the advertising, I would, I would have a, I don't really care what other school districts do. You know, like if they put up Pepsi, and you think we should put up Pepsi, if they put up McDonald's, or they put up waste managers or energy companies. I don't care what they want to do. I think Southmoreland should say, we're going to be a safe haven, and we're not going to cave in for a little bit of money. And it's going to be a really difficult thing to please me on this. You know, I would not want to see McDonald's sign up there on six different unrelated accounts. But having said that, you steer the kids into higher education, which I think, I wouldn't be debating. It is largely privatized by the pharmaceutical industry or the energy industry, West Virginia it's called. So to think that that privatization, privatization has not hit Southmoreland is, is naive. I would like to really know, do they come here and recruit, and what's going on in VOTEC schools with the industries coming in and things like that? But I do have a sense of what's going on in the higher education. Then the final response was, I remember when Dr. Scott said that, you know, tell us what we need to do, you know, and it was really a sort of an ad lib from the heart position, and only Levi took that as not unusual for me. A hundred and eighty different, a hundred and eighty degrees different than you. I understand what you said. But to me, that was when he, the board proceeded to show us the test results, and I'm just thinking, yeah, you told us what you wanted to do. You wanted test results. So this isn't a place to ask questions, I know, but I would like to know what, what your interpretation of what the mission is set out that night by Dr. Scott was because to me, it was totally, this is the exact test we want. Tell us, okay, you want scores on that test? We'll get the curriculum, we'll get the teachers in line, we'll get rid of the teachers that are, I don't mean expanding, but I just, that was my interpretation. And if you guys have a different interpretation, I would like to know because I feel better if that isn't a work.
Jen, I have one other memory of that, and that's when Dr. Scott, a lady got up, I won't bother naming her, and she said, you're just teaching to the test. And Dr. Scott got up and said, I was just told that we were teaching to the test. Thank you very much. Our curriculum is going to be aligned. And, and he just went on and on, and he basically said that at that same meeting. He said, thank you very much. I take that as a compliment, he said. And he said, yes, we are aligning our curriculum to this test and these state standards and so forth. And today I got a copy of the, the real McCoy on Common Core standards, and I'm just sick at heart. Are we going to have Common Core religion? Are we going to have Common Core, everybody's going to drive a green Yugo that gets fifty-five miles to a gallon? You better take a long, hard look at when the government steps in, and they tell us what our kids are going to learn. And believe me, they will be teaching to the test. Believe me, they will. And I, like I said, I just got a big thick packet today, and I, I read through it, and I'm just sick at heart about it. They're telling us, we, we don't even have the brains to decide. You know, we have, we, we claim we have wonderful teachers, but yet we're not even going to allow them to determine. You know, every one of us went to school. Your first grade teachers didn't meet in teams. Those first grade teachers know what to teach. I mean, it's just, they know. They're good. They do this. And in this, this Common Core standard, I'm sick about it. But also, I went through where the PSSA now is removed from, well, a lot of it, huh? A lot of it has been removed. Is it only grades three, eight? Well, that's not what I saw today. I thought it was that, too, because the Keystone was kicking in. But I, and then, like I said, there's no way to fill the Keystone. You just keep going, 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 and you do something, you'll get it. But the, the documents I read are a different ballgame. The PSSA rightfully is, is getting out of here because we haven't been teaching what's right. We've been teaching the PSSA. And I just very much resent the fact that we can't even make decisions about what our children are going to learn. Government's going to tell us what to do. It, they do that in Russia, too, folks. We should reject Common Core standards completely.
Thank you, Jen. Motion to adjourn the executive session for litigation personnel? Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
...